Good evening, everybody. My name is Ferris Sabah. I'm the county superintendent of schools. Muy buenas noches, me llamo Faris Sabah. Soy el superintendente del condado de educación. Es un gusto darles la bienvenida. It's really a pleasure to welcome all of you. We'd like to, I'd like to welcome Dr. Gail Newell, who is our public health officer. Welcome, Dr. Newell. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. It's a privilege to be here.
Our, what we're hoping to do is to provide an update to all our families and everybody who's joining us on the Zoom connection and to provide information about school safety, health and safety updates when, as it relates to COVID-19, to the best of our abilities. We're going to be sharing some information and then we're going to be opening up for questions and answers. We'd like to let everybody know that this is being recorded. And so please know that. Those of you that are able to see this, they're all just, it's, it's a junta. Si desean interpretación, a un intérprete al español, tenemos a la señorita Jessica Serna Castañeda, que nos ha acompañado. Ustedes en el, en el menú pueden mirar un, es como un símbolo, un icono de, de un mundo. Si lo apretan, van a ver Spanish. Si lo ponen ahí, ella va a empezar a, van a escuchar la voz de Jessica Serna, que va a dar la información en español. So if you want Spanish translation, you just click on the world and change it to Spanish and you'll hear Ms. Jessica Serna Castañeda's sound as she's interpreting for Dr. Newell and myself. We're using a Q and A feature for Zoom. That's how we're asking people to contribute and participate or add their questions for us to answer. The Q and A feature, the instructions are here on this slide. Basically, you'll see, you'll see the Q and A button at the bottom. It allows you to add questions and we'll do our best to make sure that we answer those questions through our, through, through this presentation, through the information and as well as through the question and answer period. So again, we're really grateful for everybody to, for coming to participate and to learn as much as you can about our schools. Our agenda for today, we're already into the welcome and in the instructions. Dr. Newell is going to give us a public health update and then I'm going to provide an education overview and update. And then we'll open it up for questions and answers. We recognize that people have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. Schools are such an important part of, of the, of the fabric of our, of our, of our country and of ours, of our community. And we want to make sure to open it up and as leave as much time as possible for those questions. So we want to thank you for, for being a part of this, of this important presentation. Before we get started, I did want to share that we've, using a lot of gathering information from the, from a lot of different sources to put together the guidance that you're going to be hearing about. And in terms of the guidance document that we put together for the county, which was prepared in conjunction with our local public health official and our local public health department, took into consideration all of the, the guidance we're getting from the CDC, from the California Department of Public Health and the California Department of Education. And we've put links in here. We'd like to let you know that you'd have a, a link to the, to this presentation right here. And we will send it out as a message to all of our, of all of our users. If you could do that for us, please put it out as a, that link so that people would be able to go to this slide deck if they, if they, if they want to. And now it's my pleasure to ask Dr. Newell to provide us some additional information and give us an update about public health. Dr. Newell?
Thank you. As I said, it's a privilege to be here and sharing the information with you. And Ferris, I think there's a hangout chat that you need to close on your screen. Thank you. And now we can all see the slides. And so let's dive right into the data. If you go to the website at Santa Cruz Health dot org, you'll see that we have a few more cases reported than this now. I submitted this yesterday and the dashboard had not yet been updated. And so there's more cases today, of course. And I also want to let you know that this data is somewhat unreliable right now. If you've been following the news at all, you'll know that the state has had a big data glitch in their public health disease reporting system. And the state thought that, the governor thought, on Monday, he did a press conference and happily announced that he was very pleased that it looked as if the cases were slowing in our state and that perhaps we were flattening the curve once again. But it turned out that by Monday afternoon, they had realized that there was some under-reporting from the lab systems. And it's not a problem in terms of reporting test results to doctors and nurses who have ordered the tests. So that's a good thing. It won't interfere with patient care. But the electronic lab reporting system into the state system has had some, some IT, some technical glitches. And the state says that for the past 10 days, they may have a 30% under-reporting of cases. That's a really big deal. It doesn't make a difference, as I said, for patient care or the care of COVID cases, but it kind of leaves us wondering which direction we're headed. In the meantime, the state is not making any decisions about economic rollbacks or opening or closing schools additionally because of this data glitch that we've had over the last 10 days. I don't even know the word for Spanish for glitch. I don't know how you translate that, but I'm sure there's something. Let's go back one more slide again. Sorry. But I do want to point out, we have been on a steep upward climb since the beginning of July. So after six months of our community doing a fantastic job of keeping the curve flat, we really shot up. And I think there's a number of reasons for that. But we're definitely headed into a surge, as you can see by that orange line, which suddenly increased quite dramatically. What we do know is that almost all of the cases, if you look at the pie graph, are person-to-person spread. So that big blue slice, kind of ignore the half of the pie that's gray, because those are cases that are still being investigated. But the other half of the pie, almost all of the cases are person-to-person spread. That means in most cases, we can identify exactly who the person got the case from. So that's part of our case investigation process. So most of our cases are from people hanging out together in, apart from their household units, with friends or extended family, usually indoors, usually without face coverings, often spending a long period of time together, eating or drinking or laughing or singing together, the things that increase your risk of spreading virus. And that's, that's what we're finding in our community and across the state. So next slide. This is a breakdown to show us where the cases are occurring and in which populations of people. And for the last six weeks or so, we have seen continuing trends where most of the cases are in Watsonville and in the unincorporated areas around Watsonville, so South County. And most have been in the Latinx population. And so even though Latinx makes only half, or I'm sorry, a third of our population, well over half of our cases are in the Latinx population. This is not because Latinx people are more susceptible to the virus. It's because of what we call the social determinants of health. Housing, access to healthy food, access to safe places to exercise, and many Latinx people need to work on the front lines where they're exposed more often to the disease, less likely to be able to hole up in a private office or work from home virtually. So next slide. You'll find this on our website as well. All of this information is updated, most of it daily, at Santa Cruz Health dot org. And there's lots of good, important information there. And these, I don't expect you to comprehend or absorb all of these graphs, but the section on the far right, under the orange area, that's how ready are our hospitals for COVID-19 in our community. And they are doing fantastic. So we're way up there in the green zone. We have lots of capacity in our hospitals and good ICU census and good ventilator census as well. And in addition, we have a blue section of this trigger, this trigger graph in the middle. That shows our testing capacity and that's our big problem right now. It's got, you can see that our testing was going up per population for a long period of time. And then over the last two weeks or so, three weeks, we've had decreasing numbers of tests performed. This is happening not only in Santa Cruz, but also in the state and across the country and around the world, because there's a global shortage of testing supplies. And I'm going to turn my video off for a moment, because while I talk, I'm going to plug my computer and I'm so sorry about that, but I can keep talking. And then also, if you look at the left side, the epidemiologic data, the word is cut off there on the screenshot, but this is the number of cases in the last 14 days. And this is where we've had our big trouble. And this is especially where our trouble is around schools, because we needed to stay under that dotted line in order to be able to open our schools. And just about two weeks ago, we crossed that dotted line and we exceeded our goal of 100 new cases per 100,000 population in the last 14 days. So you can see on that dotted line, our goal was to stay on fewer than 274 cases in a 14-day period. And that's because we have 274,000 people in our county. That is the trigger set by the state, after which we had more economic restrictions. And that happened two weeks ago. And also that mandated that our schools would not open for classroom instruction. Now, I know you've heard about waivers for our elementary schools. And in order to be under, to be considered for waivers, one of the things that has to happen is we have to keep that goal under 200 new cases per 100,000 population. So we need to stay under 540 or so, 550 cases in the last 14 days. We're still safely in that zone, but that's something to keep your eye on. And we're doing fine in terms of hospitalizations as well, although a couple of weeks ago, we came pretty close to that trigger point as well. So let's look at the next set of data. So here's the map of California. And this you can follow on the governor's website, which is covid19.ca.gov. And this tells you where the counties are that are having more problems and need more economic restrictions. And by now, almost the entire state is included. So even though there's still a lot of blue counties who are not included, they represent less than 5% of the state's population. And so at this point, over 95% of the state, the population is included in the monitoring list, which is what mandates that you cannot open your schools for classroom instruction. This is where you can follow the case rate as well. And you can see for the state, under new cases, they calculate it at 307.4. That's updated daily. And so the state as a whole does not qualify for that 200 per 100,000 to open the elementary schools. If you look almost toward the bottom, there's a percent test positivity. That's also an important number to watch, because if that goes over 8%, then that's another factor to exclude us from opening schools. So let's take a look at how Santa Cruz is doing. Next slide. So if you go to that map on the governor's website, you can click on our county or any county, if you're interested in other counties, and you can see our data for that day. So that magic number we're looking for for our schools, the second number down in blue is 149.3. And that's really good, because we want to stay under 200,000, under 200 per 100,000. We've exceeded the 100, but if we stay under 200, at some point, we may be able to consider waivers for elementary school opening. And then look way down at the bottom again. Second from the bottom, our test positivity, 5.5%. That's good. We want it to stay under eight in order to be considered to open some schools. So next slide. So what we're doing locally to ensure that our public is safe and healthy and that we are moving toward the ability to open classrooms, is we're trying to work to expand our lab testing capacity. So the state has very specific guidelines about what's required to open a school. And part of that is what's called surveillance testing. And that means that all faculty and staff have to be tested on a regular basis. So on a rotating basis, all faculty and staff are tested so that every faculty and staff member in the entire district, all the schools, all the districts, have to be tested every two months. And that has to be ongoing as long as the schools are in session. And in addition, there has to be adequate testing to figure out outbreaks and cases and contact tracing when cases are identified in schools. And that requires a lot more lab test capacity than we have in our county right now. So that's our big problem. And then also, we have to make sure that we have adequate ability resources to isolate and quarantine people who test positive or who have been exposed to others who are testing positive. And so we have extra housing. We have hotels for people in crowded housing who may need to be isolated or in quarantine. And all of that is a big, a whole lot of work on the part of our human services department to arrange that housing. We have seven hotels at this point to accommodate, plus FEMA trailers as well and shelters, many, many different kinds of shelters. So next slide. So lastly, I just want to remind everybody that really the course of this pandemic in our community, the ability to open our schools, the ability to reopen our economy, is all about individual behaviors. And so I want to remind you all that what you do as an individual, what your family members do, makes the difference between whether or not we can open schools, whether or not we can reopen our economy. And so these are the important things to remember. Other than with members of your household unit, you need to maintain six feet of distance. Stay home whenever you might be sick. Wear your face coverings as directed. Wash your hands and surfaces frequently. Cover your coughs and sneezes. And probably most important is to minimize mixing. So you shouldn't be gathering with others outside of your household at all. And that includes your extended family and your circles of friends. I know that's very difficult, but it's a very important part of helping our community recover from this pandemic. So I will look forward to hearing more and to answering your questions as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Newell. And I'm going to provide an education update and we will get to your questions as, as quickly as, as we can. We have lots of questions coming in. I just wanted to share briefly that in the education community with our school superintendents and all of our schools, we've been partnering also with childcare providers, private schools, our charter schools. We've been working together, discussing a lot of the different challenges and preparations for, for opening. And until recently, until we got the guidance from, from the governor about the requirement to have to go to distance learning only, we were looking at hybrid type schedules with schedules that would allow for a portion of our students to come in and, you know, two days a week, three days a week. And as the numbers of cases increase, obviously the restrictions have increased. And the partnership, we've been working with Dr. Newell and, and all the district, the different organizations that I mentioned, we put together a guidance document that you'll have a link to, if you have access to this slide deck, that would give you access to all of our recommendations for how to open schools safely. And when that is, when we're able to do so, because at this point is under the governor's order, we're not able to do so. You all know well that on July 17th, the governor announced that if a county was on the state, the county monitoring list, that we would not be able to open up our schools. They also provided us with guidance from the California Department of Public Health and that we would be on the monitoring list. And until we are off that list for 14 days, we cannot go to in-person instruction. And so we can only offer distance learning. As Dr. Newell explained, we came to the conclusion that based on all the requirements in the waivers, and we'll be, I'll be sharing that in just a moment, that we were not, we did not really meet the, the requirements of, to allow for us to be able to offer waivers and for schools to be able to, to open up our elementary schools, to be able to open up. So the waiver process requires, I put in here the actual content from the California Department of Public Health of what the expectations are for, for those waivers. And, and I've added in here the list of items that, that are required to be in place for waivers to be approved. And, and those include everything from looking at whether elementary schools can, can establish those small, stable cohorts, that the local health guidance, safety plans and availability of personal protective equipment, that the case rate, we have to look at the case rate in the, in the community, the testing percent in positivity trends, local hospitalization, other local conditions, and availability of testing resources within the community. And the extent with which, that we also have to get support from staff and labor organizations, the community and parent organizations. And, and so we're, I know that a lot of the questions are related specifically to our capacity for contact tracing and for testing capacity. And, and once we get to the question and answer period, I'll, we'll see if Dr. Dr. Newell can clarify what that testing capacity will look like. Because several of the questions related are related to that. In other words, what are the metrics that we would want to look for or to be able to, to, or we could determine that we in fact have the test capacity to be able to respond and prepare for waivers and, and in-person instruction. Districts have been working on their plans. Teachers have been working on developing their distance learning now that we've had more time than we did in the spring, providing hundreds and hundreds of teachers with professional development. The, the education code requires us to have daily engagement with students. And the districts are contacting their families with their schedules, with their, with the kind of program they're putting in place. And it does vary from, from district to district. And so that information would be accessible to you from your, directly from your district office or, or your school. And, and that communication has been going on. I'm a parent and I received some communication from my district this week. And, and we recognize, of course, that we have a responsibility, even in this distance learning only environment, that to continue to provide essential services to our families, services to make sure that students can get connected, that they have a device, that they have internet connectivity. Food services, mental health services and other services are going to continue as, as much as we possibly can offer. But all of this does not take away from our recognition of the challenges for families. And we experienced, our families experienced such a huge impact in the spring when we, we had to close our campuses. And we recognize that this, this going distance learning only, again, is going to have the similar impact. It was, it really was a lot of the inequities that families with the highest needs were, were impacted the most. Families with limited childcare options in our, in our county. We recognize that families need flexibility. They need support. We've, we recognize that we need to have a partnership with our parents and with our families. And we ask folks to work with their schools and their school districts to really maintain that partnership as much as possible, to ask for that flexibility and that support that you need as much as we can. And it doesn't make it any easier when it comes to the, the fact that we're, we're not in person and, and we all wish we could be there. But until we're able to, to get into an in-person environment, we are going to be doing everything that we can to make this, this, this distance learning environment and the support that we're offering as effective as we possibly can. We're going to transition to questions. And I'd like to, I'd like to start with that first question, Dr. Newell, about test capacity. Several of the questions want to clear, kind of a little bit more clarity as what it would look like for us to have sufficient test capacity for us to be able to consider the opening of the waiver process.
Well, in the bigger context of test capacity, we really have to look at test capacity for the entire community first. And in the context of test scarcity, the reality of that, the California Department of Public Health has asked us as a public health jurisdiction to ensure that we're prioritizing testing. And so of course, top priority for testing is people who are in the hospital with COVID-like symptoms. So we need to make sure that our hospitals, first of all, have adequate testing for those very ill patients. I think we can all agree on that. We don't even have that top priority met at this point. Also, in tier one priority is the ability for our public health contact tracers and case investigators to be able to adequately test in order to do their outbreak management. So that would definitely be part of the school testing need. And then there's a whole category of ill people in tier two. And those all need to be met. So we need to be able to test everybody with symptoms. And then tier three is where the faculty and staff in the schools, that surveillance testing fits in. So people who don't feel sick, who are feeling well, but need to be tested for their work. And so teachers are in tier three, faculty and staff. So we can't look just at them. We can't give our priority testing to well people if we have sick people who are unable to be tested and if we can't work our outbreaks. And so it, the question is a big complicated one. But if we wanted to calculate just for the schools, what we would need is, we would have to know the number of all faculty and staff for all schools that we're going to open for classroom teaching. And then calculate the amount it would take to test those people every two months. So we'd need to have the capacity to do that, plus the capacity to work outbreaks for the schools. So it would depend on how many schools open with waivers. Elementary schools were not even eligible to open all class, all schools. It would only be elementary schools. And that, the state has defined that as up to grade six.
One of the questions is about if waivers were to be obtained, would parents be, for parents who are not comfortable opening up, would they have an option to not send their kids to school? And all the school districts have that as part of their plan is, is to, to work with families that are not ready to send their kids to school, even if the school is offering that hybrid option. So that's, that is an option that, that our school districts have, have discussed and considered.
And that's important, because there's no way to make a classroom setting completely safe from COVID, just like it can't be completely safe from any other infectious disease. But especially right now, when this pandemic is hitting our county harder than it ever has, it's important for parents to understand there's nothing we can do to completely eliminate the risk. There will be a risk associated with classroom education.
Another question about childcare. So one of the questions, several of the questions asked, why is childcare being made? Is, is that allowed? And schools are allowed to continue providing services and schools are not?
Yeah, this is a really difficult question. And part of it lies with the state regulations in that this in that the state guidance and regulations requirements to reopen schools and classrooms is much stricter than it is to open childcare. And part of that is around licensing and part of it is driven by the economy and the need for childcare in order for people to return to work. But some of it makes sense from a disease perspective. And that is, is that ideally childcare is a full-time event every day, all day, and would be with the same children. And we recommend it's this, what the state guidance says is the smallest possible group. My recommendation is that it's 12 or fewer children and that siblings are included in the same group. But some state guidance even recommends 10 or fewer. But the the order, the governor's order in form of the guidance for childcare is the smallest possible size. And so, and then it should be the same one or two teachers every day, all day. And so each child would be exposed to far fewer children in a childcare setting like that than they would be if they were part of the school day in school, part of the day in childcare, perhaps going to other childcare settings or classes with multiple different teachers, especially middle school, high school, where they would be changing classrooms. That's a lot more exposure and potential virus spread than in a small pod of full-time childcare.
Thank you. Some of the questions are mentioning that why are we wanting to reopen schools? If it's not safe to do so, and I think that's exactly the point that Dr. Noel and myself are trying to make is that we don't. The reason why we are in this situation is because it is not currently safe to reopen our schools. And and also, we don't, it's not currently safe for us to provide those waivers. And so there isn't, we are not in, by any means trying to put anybody at risk. And that's why we're doing the, we we have these these restrictions in place. And and our goal is to provide the the very best quality educational experience for for students in this environment with these restrictions. And some of these restrictions are 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 mandated as a result. And some of them are also, we're looking at some of the, we both have to look at the guidance we get from the state as Dr. Noel explained. And also, we have to look at what's happening here locally. And 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 so we have to keep both of those things in mind. But our goal from an educational point of view also is to try to do our best to provide support services to our students. We recognize that without all the safety nets that schools represent, that that students are missing out on a lot of different things. And so we're mobilizing to to change the way we provide those services, providing distance mental health services, providing, trying as much as possible through daily interactions with students to provide a lot of the supports that that would would normally have existed in a in a face-to-face environment. And so we're committed to that, we're taking, putting a lot of resources into that and doing our best to 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 provide the very best quality educational experience for our students and make sure that that we are keeping students as safe as possible. Dr. Noel, some of the questions that are coming up are also about the idea of pandemic pods. Parents are talking about the idea of bringing kids together in groups and and different families taking care of different kids over the week for them to work on their homework together and so on. And and from a health perspective, what are your thoughts about that that kind of that that kind of approach?
So from a disease perspective, the fewer interactions that households have with other households, the better. So ideally, we would all stay in our own household unit and not have any exposure to any other household units. And then we have to remember, for example, in a childcare group of 12, that's the same as exposing 12 different household units to each other. And so a pod is probably similar to that kind of thinking, as long as it's limited to a few children. I cannot officially endorse pods. The state health officer has made that clear to us as local health officers. Some of the local, some of the counties, their health officers were officially endorsing pods of 10 or 12 people. So two or three families could get together and they could interact and and minimize risk while still allowing adults and children to have some time together socially. But we've been told that we cannot endorse that, that still there is to be no gatherings of any kind other than those allowed by law, which are the constitutionally guaranteed right to gather for religion, for religious and cultural ceremonies and for political reasons for protests and others. And other than that, we're not to endorse gatherings. But unofficially, I will tell you that as long as it models some kind of childcare situation where the intermingling of families is as few as possible, that's better than than more more mixing and more interaction. I know that's a vague answer, but that's all I'm allowed to give. I do want to go back and make a few comments about the risk of classroom education. And what we're trying to do is balance that against the benefits of classroom education. And the American Academy of Pediatrics put out an article earlier this summer, a study and recommendations that strongly encouraged classroom education. And it lists the many benefits of classroom education. So besides what Ferris talked about, about all of the the safety, the social net purposes, safety, social net purposes of schools, being a place that children are fed, where they receive medical care, social services, psychological care, besides education. It's also classroom interactions, classroom type interactions are important for normal childhood development. So especially in our elementary school age children. So it's really a matter of weighing risks and benefits. And so even though it may never be completely safe from COVID, at least not in the near future, we hope that the benefits of being back in the classroom will outweigh the risks in the near future.
Thank you. There's a question about outdoor schooling and why can't we allow outdoor schooling, in-person outdoor schooling and like, and things like using the pools, for example?
The state guidance does encourage outdoor activity as much as possible when schools reopen. And so any kind of outdoor classroom setting or outdoor experience. For example, I know many people really want to sing, especially with younger children. And so we can probably do that outdoors if we're six feet apart, all the kids, and still do some singing. Singing is otherwise kind of dangerous because of the droplet spread. So especially in an indoor setting, it can be fairly risky. So it's a an important part and consideration of reopening the schools.
Let's see. And so just to clarify, so outdoor schools is not, is not an option for during, until schools are fully are are reopened. We're not able to do it, correct?
I think when we start talking accepting waiver applications, that that will be a consideration in the schools that we might approve for a waiver if they're able to do some of their classroom activity outdoors.
One of the questions here is is about using tele, telehealth type visits for students. And that's something that our districts are looking at, kind of deploying the therapeutic supports through through that Zoom, having one-on-one conversations with students, having a tiered system so that if students are not showing up for their daily connection or when they show up, that there's a concern that the teachers have, that there's different levels of support that would that would take place for students to really make sure that we're doing everything that we can to provide support for them. Some of the questions are also related to one-on-one services. And that's something that we're hoping to get some additional guidance from the state about the possibility of providing one-on-one services that that would be non-instructional in nature, like for special education students or for therapeutic services, distancing with masks and so on. But so it would be, it would be safe, but but if, but maybe necessary to be done in person. Let's see.
Do you want to address the issue of the swimming pool that was asked earlier? And the use of, use of school facilities, not for traditional classroom education, but otherwise? Is that a topic you want to discuss tonight?
So from a, sure, let's, about about outside agencies using school facilities?
Yeah, so I know in some jurisdictions, some counties, there has been approval by the Office of Education to use classrooms for childcare or to to use the fields or the swimming pools, athletic facilities for approved use under state guidance. So I I get a lot of emails and questions about that and why the schools can't be used. And so I think you've made a countywide decision about that, not to use, to allow that, is that correct?
It's correct. So at this point, the 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 county superintendents have have looked at that. They made a decision to not allow for outside organizations to be using school facilities. The reason for that is is, one is that it seemed to be dissonant with the, that we can't open up our school facilities for for schooling. Also, the school facilities are mainly cases are being used by teachers and and other staff. And also the challenge of when it comes to making sure that we're keeping the facilities that's that the, when it comes to sanitizing, the sanitizing and disinfecting process. And so at this point, we're not looking at opening up facilities and for for outside agencies.
And that's understandable.
Okay, somebody, let's see, Sage, do you have, can you help me identify questions that we need to? We have, we're lots of questions here. Could you elaborate on the the relationship with UCSU? There is a couple of questions about testing and UCSC and about that partnership. Could you share a little bit about, because that's going to be really important for being able to increase our test capacity in the county?
Right, so we're very fortunate in Santa Cruz that we have an independent lab at UC Santa Cruz. They have a lab there anyway called the Genomics Lab. And it's not located right on campus, it's on the west side of Santa Cruz. And they have developed the ability to test for COVID-19. And they very much want to and have already partnered with the community to provide COVID-19 testing. And they've been approved by the FDA for their test. And they are currently doing about 250 tests per day, mostly for the safety net clinic. So they started with Santa Cruz Community Health. And now they're also working with Salud Para la Gente. And they're also running some tests for us at the county for contact tracing and case investigation. And we're very fortunate in that they are not limited by the reagent shortage that the rest of the world is, because they make their own, basically. But they do need more testing equipment. So right now, they're limited to about 250 tests per day. But the county has just purchased an additional $1 million worth of testing equipment for them. And that will enable them to to increase their testing to about 900 tests per day, which is very substantial for our county. So the equipment has not yet arrived, we're waiting for the arrival. And then it will need to be installed and quality tested, it will take a few weeks. And then it will be gradual for them to in, get that up and running to a full 900 per day. When that happens, we should be set to be able to meet our testing needs through all the, all tier one, two, and three on the testing priorities, including surveillance testing for the schools. And so we're really excited about that. And and part of the the agreement with UC Santa Cruz for the $1 million worth of equipment that they're getting from county funds is that county testing will take priority. So over perhaps, you know, other local neighboring counties who might want to use their services.
Go ahead, Sage.
There are just quite a few questions regarding what kind of restrictions preschool providers might be facing to offer care.
So preschool providers fall under the category of childcare. There's a lot of guidance. The legal orders around childcare can be found on the governor's website, the same one I was talking about, the covid19.ca.gov. Also on our website, there's a link at santacruceshelf.org to childcare guidance. And then in addition to that, there's also licensing requirements for licensed childcare. If, and then there's specific program requirements. So for, I'm blanking on the name of the pre-K program Head Start. They have their whole own set of regulations and requirements, as do other programs. And so it would depend on what kind of preschool education it is. But the 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 legal orders having to do with COVID can be found online under childcare guidance.
There was a question about why private organizations and businesses are able to create pods and charge for childcare, but parents and private schools are not able to do so?
Well, there's not, they're not legally allowed to create pods of families. I don't know if they're referring to a pod of childcare. So childcare is restricted to 12 or the smallest possible group. My recommendation is a maximum of 12 plus two teachers that are all day, every day. And so it minimizes the risk of disease transmission because of the consistency of that group. Other gatherings are not allowed legally.
And so so it's not that private organizations can do it and the the schools can't do it. It's that nobody is able to do that at this point.
Right.
Thank you. But there are organizations that have, such as day camps and our licensed care facilities and so on, that have authorization to be able to do so. So you have to be able to know which is, which which kind of authorization is available to be able to to participate safely and appropriately.
And they all need to fall under the childcare guidance regulations.
Lots of gratitude to you, Dr. Noel, and for your your work. And so thank you and also for the schools. There are several several questions about the timeframe for that testing that folks are asking. Is there a way, is there a timeframe that you have in your mind where that testing capacity that you discussed would be? And is that something that you'd be able to to predict?
Well, a week ago, UC Santa Cruz told us, as soon as four to six weeks, they could start ramping up. So I don't think we'll be ready in four to six weeks yet, but sometime this fall, we should be able to meet testing capacity enough that at least some elementary school waivers can be approved.
And I did also want to elaborate on on something Dr. Noel said, that the schools are also looking at working with public health to develop dedicated school-based contact tracers, teams of contact tracers, so that the school community would also have its own contact tracers to be able to to trace if if any potential exposures are take place. And so that's, there are multiple things that we would want to look for before we would open up, reopen our schools. So testing is one of them, contact tracing is another, and so all things that that were on that slide that are listed by the California Department were on that slide that are listed by the California Department of Public Health have to be in place for us to be able to move forward with waivers and reopening. Sage?
Can you hear one moment?
I know that many parents are interested in, while you're looking Sage. Uh, many parents are interested in youth sports guidance. And that has finally been posted by the state. Um, we've been waiting for that for a long time. Um, the news isn't particularly good. Um, there will be no um, sporting events uh, or tournaments of any kind or field trips during this um, fall season anyway. Um, the uh, sports teams can do individual conditioning uh, for sports, but nothing contact. And they can do drills as long as the drills um, keep the kids six feet apart. Um, and that's the extent of what's allowed. And even tournaments for things like debate and chess teams and, and those kind of things will also not be allowed. And travel between school districts, districts for competitions are not allowed.
One of the comments is uh, about, about if the risk factors for children is, are, are lower, why don't we just open the schools? Um, and we hear that quite a lot. I get a lot of emails, uh, questions about that. And I think one, one thing I'll, I'll start with and Dr. Noel could add to it is, is that students don't, children don't go to school on a vacuum. They interact with uh, lots of adults and when, when we would have open schools. And then they go back home and they interact with more adults as well. And so um, to think that because children may not, may be less likely to get sick than others. Um, doesn't mean that they would not be, that others would not be, would not get sick as a, as a result. And so part of our responsibility is not only to make sure that our students are sick, but everybody in our school community is sick. Our teachers, our uh, family members who are at home. We have a responsibility to, to make sure that we're thinking about the whole environment. Is there anything you want to add to that, Dr. Noel?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Um, some studies have shown that children under the age of 10, so nine and below are much less likely to get the disease. And even if they get the disease, they're less likely to pass it back and forth and to each other. Um, so we're not so worried about those kids themselves. We're more worried about the teachers, the staff, the inevitable interaction between all of those in the workplace. And then kids 10 and over are more like adults in their ability to transmit the virus. And then um, also in children, when they do get it, there is this rare complication and inflammatory syndrome that can cause uh, lifelong disease and even death. And so even though it's very rare, it is real. And um, I saw an update on that last night on a news report that reported that um, already in the United States, 324 children have had that uh, inflammatory syndrome and will be living with the consequences for the rest of their lives. So it's not completely without risk for young children.
Another common thing we hear is, you know, that other countries have, have opened uh, their schools and why can't we open? And I, I think that uh, in many cases, the comparisons are, are to countries that have, have done a much better job of keeping um, the, their, the transmission under control. And uh, the, one, one person asked about Europe, and if you look at Europe's numbers and where we are, we're in a very different place. And many of the countries that did reopen when they were having a surge actually reclosed their schools. And there's been lots of examples of that across the country and across the world.
There are a lot of questions in the chat, um, or concerns rather about um, how schools are going to continue to provide essential services like meals, mental health support. Um, how can we, you know? I guess I suppose there's concerns about um, suicide and domestic abuse. I'm just how, how can, how are schools going to provide us uh, these essential services?
So uh, the, the schools have been developing um, a wide range of kind of multiple levels of support for students. So remember that uh, that we're looking at daily contact with students, which is something that we didn't have in, in place before. Looking at making sure that there, that everybody is kind of uh, wanting, is providing these kind of more wraparound services for students. Uh, one-on-one mental health services through distant, through, you know, distance learning. We're also hoping that we will get authorization to be able to provide uh, one-on-one supports um, in person at a distance. And so, um, so there's uh, the school districts have been working really hard to develop those safety net systems uh, for students. And to also create a responsive system. Um, so things like, like providing uh, school uh, nutrition services and, and uh, free lunches for families, all of those services are going to continue, mental health services. Not only that, but we're also partnering with all our nonprofit agencies, our clinics, Salud para la gente, Pajaro Valley Prevention Student Assistance and Compass Services, uh, Community Bridges. Of all of these agencies, we're working together in partnership to, to provide the, as much support as we possibly can for, for, for our students. And so this is something we're very concerned about, and we recognize that it's much more difficult for us to provide these services in this environment. But we're absolutely committed to do so. And we learned a lot from, from how, how effective we were in doing so in the spring and and every superintendent in this county and all of the teachers and staff and support folks are working really hard to make sure that we provide as many supports to students and their families as we possibly can. And so those systems you can learn about from your school. I would, I would, um, you, you'll, you'd be learning about a lot of those support systems because the schools have been putting those together and, and creating a lot of those safety nets uh, for students. We are almost at our time. And so unfortunately, we still have a lot of questions and we recognize that. We are going to share a uh, link for you to be able to continue sending us questions that we'll be able to answer after the fact. And um, a lot of folks put in the same question several times. And so um, there, there are some duplicates here. Um, but we're, we're working, um, a lot of the questions are really not so much questions, but comments and advocacy. And we really appreciate that. We, we recognize how important this issue is. And how much uh, you care, but we also want you to hear that we care uh, deeply about this. And that we want to ensure both the safety of, of, of our, everybody in our school community, but also that we're, we're doing everything we can to kind of overcome the distance that we have to maintain right now, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to continue to, to provide those services and supports to our students, both, both academically, but also socially, emotionally and, and, and otherwise. Um, Dr. Noel, do you have any, any uh, final comments for us before we uh, we finalize our, our, our conversation today?
Well, I would say, and I should have said this at the beginning, that I am a mother of three children who all went through public school K through 12. And um, I have tried to put myself in your shoes as parents, those of you who have children in these, this age group now. And it would be so difficult for me, even with my level of expertise and knowledge, to make this heart-wrenching, gut-wrenching decision about whether to send your children back to the classroom. And um, my heart goes out to all of you um, as you um, struggle with this decision. And um, try to decide what's best for your children as individuals and for you all as a family. And um, my um, best wishes to you as you move through the next few months with your children um, and make these decisions.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. And then um, so the link uh, for us to be able to provide uh, for people to continue to, to send their questions. Um, what, what is the link, Sage?
S C C O E dot link slash comments. It is in the chat.
Okay. So in the chat, we put in another link for you. We're going to continue working to try to answer your questions in writing. And so we, we really appreciate your time today. Uh, I know that not everybody was able to get all of their, their questions answered, but we did our best to do so. Um, we are going to plan on, on continuing to provide great forums, um, to provide uh, as many answers as we can on an ongoing basis. And so more forums uh, will, will be taking place in the future. We, we think it's in this, it's really important for us to stay connected and to provide multiple avenues for, for the community to talk to us, to ask their questions and share their concerns. And we're just very appreciative of everybody's advocacy and concern um, on behalf of our students and our families. And we want to thank everybody for, for joining us today. And um, thank you. Uh, please keep the questions coming. Uh, please use the, the, that link, S C C O E dot link forward slash um, comments, correct? Sage? Comments, right?
That's correct.
It's, the link is in your, is in the chat box for you to click on. And um, and again, we want to thank you for your time today and, and uh, and uh, look forward to, to chatting with you soon. Thank you so much.